... 0:00:00,000 --&gt; 0:00:00,000, Mr. Eichmann. I'm the president of United Steelworkers Local 4950 in Migani. I'm here tonight on behalf of our 600-plus active members, and we have a couple thousand retirees as well. With the two active mines in Merica County and the 250-plus inactive mine sites, we feel that the county mine inspector is a full-time position and deserves the compensation as such. With the community safety as the utmost important issue at hand, we strongly oppose any type of reduction in wage or benefit to the county mine inspector. Doing so, in our opinion, would devalue the importance of this position. Brian Underwood, president of USW 4974, myself, met with Commissioner Nordine last week, and we had a conversation that went into great detail over our position and why we so strongly oppose any wage or benefit reduction. It's my understanding from this conversation that some of the wording in the original state statute in regards to the county mine inspector may be outdated or no longer make sense. If this is a feeling of the commission, I, being an appointee to the Governor's Committee for Michigan's Mining Future, am offering to take any ideas or recommended changes to the state statute back to Lansing and share with my colleagues on that note. So that's why I'm here tonight. Our next meeting is scheduled for early March or any time in the future, so choose. I can tell you that suggested updates to the statute are already being looked at with involvement from our local union, community citizens, with help from Representative Combenzi's office. So with that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Grons. I live at 235 South Marigold Street, Ischmane. I am sitting Safety Committee Chairman and treasurer for Steelworkers Local 4950 as well. And we represent, as Chad said, various workers across the county, including at the Tilden Mine in the Mining Operations Department. I'm here this evening again because we believe this commission is considering, or will be considering, changing the compensation package to our county mine inspector. And while in recent days again it has been removed from any kind of agenda, we've got some communications from you folks. We feel you deserve an explanation on our behalf and why we stand firmly against any changes to that position. This year marks 173 years of mining on this iron range. For 173 years, mining has been the lifeblood of this county, but we must remember it's come at a very high cost. The human cost of mining in this county is very high. It's affected our miners in our community for decades and generations. We must remember that there's a lot of blood on this iron range, the blood of our fathers, our brothers, and our sons, and our friends. Thousands of families in this county have been affected by deaths, crippling injuries, and occupational illnesses from our mines. Some of these fallen miners lay a tomb to this day in those mines. While over the years, safety records have improved dramatically, but rest assured that was no accident. The improvements to health and safety of our mines are a team effort between labor, management, and the government. In my position, I have direct interaction with our county mine inspector while he performs his inspections at the Tilden. And during their time as county inspectors, John Carlson and his predecessors have been instrumental in improving conditions for our miners at the various mines in this county. Less we forget, too, about the important role our county mine inspector has in ensuring that the 250-plus abandoned mines in this county are safe and protect the public. So distinguished commissioners, we come before you tonight, and I speak for myself and the steelworkers, brothers and sisters, when I say we will not sit back and watch this position of county mine inspector devalued in any way, shape, or form. We are not interested in going backwards in any way when it comes to health and safety of our members. And by reducing the wage and benefits of this position, we feel the county misunderstands the importance and value of this position to us, the miners, and our communities. I find it very hard to believe that a county that has received millions and millions of dollars in tax revenue from mining over the years can't afford to properly fund such an important position. I ask this body to reevaluate the importance of this office before any further actions or changes take place. And remember, we owe this to our miners, we owe this to our community, but most of all, we owe it to the miners that have lost their lives on this range. Thank you.
Public comment? Do you have a public comment?
I'd like to follow up on that. I am the Kern County Mine Inspector, and I'm going on my 20th year, and I'd like to say how much fun it was working with the Board of Directors. I have to say, too, all those years, the Board has been behind me in everything. If I ever had a problem, just had to talk to the lawyer, he knew exactly what to tell me. I had to talk to the judge, and I talked to the Health Department. I did my job as county mine inspector, working with the union here at heavy weight. Every time I went to the mine, I told them, "I'm here to protect all the miners. If you've got anything that's a problem," and they'll know and they can verify it, I said, "we will get together and we'll talk about it and we'll get it solved." I got the power to change things here. But I want to just say, in 20 years, this is going to be my last. I'm riding that big wave in the shore. So I've had 20 years of, on this, going on 20 years, working with you guys has been excellent. Jerry has come to bat a few times for me, but we had a problem, we couldn't get a fence fenced up in North Lake. I went to Jerry, I said, "I can't get the mine, I can't get the mine mineralite owners, and they will not listen to me." So Jerry said, "Let's get it done." You counties fenced the mine in, and it was right near houses, so I didn't want to let it go. But until I got the mine fenced, then Jerry and them took care of getting the mine inspector to do it. Anytime I had a problem, I went to anyone here except for a key up in Gwin. That's just a little joke. But anyway, I've just got to say, in all those years, in 20 years of being mine inspector, what have I done? I'll just go through it basically a little bit. I want to go, when I first got the job, I knew I wasn't going to keep all the fences fenced because there's no way, because they were cut almost after you even fixed them in days, they're cut. But my idea was work with Leo Lefon and go to schools teaching the kids about mine safety and danger at the caving grounds. It was wonderful. We talked to these kids in all their classes, you know, the younger kids, and when I was out in the streets, they'd come up and tell me that. I've been telling my brother and sister to stay out of there, but I felt that was a, and I've never in 20 years seen a young lad inside the fences. So I felt that my job was done there. Also, we were able, well, Hyman Copper came here. They were looking at that, they got ahold of me, and they said they wanted to know how to get to some of these gold mines. I said, "Come on with me, we'll go down to the county down there." We got them all, everyone I could find the GPS, and they were able to punch them in and get to the mines. We don't have to spend hours and hours walking and looking for gold mines. All these gold mines were in remote areas. They're, as far as being fenced, it was my judgment that the only one that ever fell was a moose, he fell in one one time. That was the only time I had any worry. So some of the ones I was able to get close to, I put a barbed wire fence around, not barbed wire, a single strand around who tied rope or ribbons on them to keep the deer out anyway. But it was really interesting, I think I found, I like to say 60 to 70 of them, all the way up beyond Silver Lake and up in that area. The history of mining is gold mining, iron mines, everything. I was able to get up there and find them, get them registered, and I put them on GPS and it, you know, so people that, if there's any, anything happened in that area, we'd go and look at the gold mines and see if there was anything there. I'm thinking of a few other things instrumental, working with the union, we were able to get a major, major problem. Working with the lawyers, working with the judge, we were able to change something out there that the company was dragging their heels on. We got it done because they knew that we had the power to do that. I didn't use my, I used my power with, I get, I talked to people. I get to know them, I get to be friends with them. We get things done. I can't believe how many times, well, even, I won't go to mention all the names, but I got to be really friends with most of the mine managers, most of the people that owned, all around here owned a property. So I was really lucky, if I ever had a problem, it was only a matter of minutes to go talk to them and they were taken care of. I think the job should be, common sense should be most important, working with people. You know, then the, I just, in 20 years, I've done many things, I don't think three minutes will be enough, but if there's any questions you want to ask me, please raise your hand because I'd sure like to answer.
I'd just like to thank you for a good workman-like job that you've done for 20 years and gave us here the annual report, and we kept on tabs and we supported you as far as any dangerous areas, given that the mineral rights owners wouldn't pay. We paid and went out there legally to get the job done, so thanks for all your good work.
Any other questions? I'm here for--
I've just got one. In the 20-plus years, Yogi, that you've been out there, what was the most monumental thing that you've seen or that you did?
Well, I like to take a lot of pride in one thing, it's that I worked at the crushers, at the mines, and I know that when I worked at the Empire, we had a way of putting crusher doors in. When we went down in the crusher to work, we'd push a button and the door would close. When I got over to the Tilden, where my prime job was to get crusher doors in, because they were putting just, not, nothing like a crusher door. There had, at times, they even had just signs out there in front. But a guy's absent-minded, you know, with two mines like that, they could back in and jump a load on anybody working in a crusher. And I fought for 10 years to get crusher doors put in, and there was a lot of hard time getting the money at one time because CCI is having little problems with money, we're just keeping them alive. But when they got the money, I was out there one day, I called a friend of mine, and he said, "You'll never get them in. He retired, he came out, I want you to push the button, both doors are going to close." I felt so, so good about that. That was my pride and joy. But I worked 10 years to get it, and I went, every time I went back, I went to the Safety Department and asked them if they got any money for the crusher door, but they did get them, and I was very proud of it.
Thank you for your years of service.
Thank you. I guess, I don't know if there's other ones that want to speak about it, but getting to the mine inspector, the Board of Commissioners hasn't discussed this issue whatsoever as far as in 2020, Yogi's a mine inspector and at the same wages he was in 2019. And we have a schedule in place for new mine inspectors that come on in the following year, so I don't know where all this information is coming from, but it didn't come from this Board of Commissioners. Whether individuals have their own opinion, that's one thing, but it hasn't even been discussed by the Board of Commissioners. That's, that's the fact, doesn't matter.
I'd like to say I'm very glad the union stood up for wages. We're not going to get a quality person working there without the proper compensation and health benefits. I know you guys, it's, I'm so happy to hear that, that's the main reason I came down and maybe a few others.
I'm going to get you, I'm going to get you a key to the Mac of the mine.
Better get it to me. Better get it, it's been a new year.
Anybody else want to speak to the mine inspector?
I just want to speak about the mine.
Okay.
My name is Joe Rose, I live at 540 East Michigan here in Marquette. I'm also the union safety representative for 4974 Steelworkers at the Tilden. And I want to say that the mine inspector doesn't just help the mines, he helps the community. You know, his job is instrumental in educating our children on how to stay safe out there. And the safety works, it's very transparent, you know, it doesn't look like there's anything happening. But I think Yogi's efforts with the community, the schools, you know, whether it's getting out in the fences or coming out to the mines, and I can speak for this one myself because he helped us get our mass air units working in our pellet plant, where our company was only keeping about 60% of them working at best. Yogi came in, he said, "I'm going to be back in a week, I want to see the problem fixed. You'll be home to home next week." We got 90% of our air mass, air mass air units working. So I think that, you know, if you are considering any kind of devaluation in this wage, it'd be a tremendous disservice to our community, and not just our miners, but our children and the general public. I mean, there's a lot of sandy ground out there, there's a lot of abandoned mines, and there's a lot of need for education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment?
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Darlene Allen, 805 North Front Street, Marquette. I'm here representing the League of Women Voters. I just wanted to make a brief announcement regarding an upcoming community event that the commissioners and the community might be interested in. The Marquette Regional History Center is starting a special exhibit. It began on January 20th, it goes clear through June 6th, and it's called Vote and Be Counted. And it's basically a celebration of the importance of the census and also the passage of the 19th Amendment, where women finding one's right to vote. A hundred years ago, they were, after a long, long battle, finally gained that right to vote. And this, this exhibit will be, will cover a period of time and will also highlight local members that were, local leaders that were involved in the suffragists movement. So I encourage people to stop by. The League will be at the opening reception, which is on Wednesday, January 29th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And members and from the League and also community have all grouped together to develop a really dramatic display of the suffrage movement and the struggles that happened and really take some time to show and explain and, and create some excitement about really the very long time it took to get the right to vote and some of the painful things that happened, you know, women being jailed, women being starved. So it's, I think it's a very important event for people to be aware of, and I'd just like to let you all know and hope you can come.
Just before you leave, I'd like to thank you on behalf of the board for all the work that your group did throughout the state on the redistricting initiative. It was great work and very important for the future democracy in Michigan.
You're welcome, and you can look forward to lots of voter services coming up this next year.
Public comment?
Good evening, commissioners. Matt Weasley, the Marquette County Prosecutor and Attorney. I'll try to be brief. May I approach and just hand out what I'm going to refer here to the board members?
What I'm handing out is some charts and some statistics on 2019 crime stats. I guess I should have had me some more coal here, apologies. Yeah, why don't we do that? That'd make life a lot easier. Thanks. I'll take one, pass that on, Mr. Eichmann. So I have 11 copies, one for each commissioner, one for the board, one for the, for the mining journal, I wasn't anticipating the other press. I just wanted to report that 2019, as I projected all year, was a busy year. We had 667 felony files. If you look at the chart on methamphetamine cases, you can see that's been one of our biggest problems. We had 230, 218 methamphetamine felony files last year, and the chart kind of illuminates the crime trends over the last year. So we've been maintaining, we've been fairly busy. I was prepping an inner jury trial the last couple of weeks, so I wasn't at your first meeting of the year, but I wanted to give you an update on our crime stats that are holding steady. I also want to reiterate for everyone here and the, and the media that our street crime is low to nonexistent. Most of this is drug-related, and any violent crimes are usually interpersonal types of violence. So we do have a safe community, but we do have an increase in felony cases. And I just want to also state that our authorization rate has not had an uptick. We've maintained about the same level of authorization, so it's not like, I've, I've been accused of chart overcharging or maybe we charged too many cases, but over the last seven years or eight years, our rate of authorization has remained pretty steady at about 82%. So that means 18% of the cases that come into the criminal justice system never even get into the, that come to me never get into the system. So we pride ourselves on making sure that we screen out things that can't be proven or present a constitutional or legal violation, that the case hasn't come into the system. Our numbers are right on pace to where they were last year, but I wanted to give you this little snapshot of the last eight years so you can kind of see where we've been at and where we're going and let you know that we're hard at work. Thank you.
Public comment?
Hello, commissioners. My name is Jeremy Applecamp, 168 Marigold, Winnebago, Michigan. At first, I didn't know what I was going to say, as usual, when I talk to a commission. I listen, I hold back, gather input, spoke from media and for other people in the community, and then I thought, I think that's a smart way to address a commission on their decision. Tonight, I'd like to say that I brought a business to Marquette County. I'm also a member of the American Jail Association, and I'm a longtime U-ber, not of this county, but Manon County. And for my business and for my fellow citizens, I truly believe that what's coming up on your agenda tonight is to make this county a Second Amendment stationary county. I feel that's very important. It's very important for hunters in this community, it's very important for local business and the economy of this community to look and address this issue. This company that I bought and relocated to Marquette County was actually relocated from Richmond, Virginia, and everyone in the media and probably on this commission knows what had, what had happened there. People stood up for the Second Amendment rights. It went smooth, and I hope it will go smooth in this county as well. This right has been passed on from our forefathers to us, to everyone on this commission, all races, all creeds, it's been passed on. For us not to support the Second Amendment in this county, it will truly sadden me. It will sadden me so much, I will move this business out of this county. I guarantee you I will. I hope that you guys as a commission, men and women, will take that into consideration, and I appreciate your time tonight to let me tell you that. I also appreciate your time tonight to allow me to have three kids in this county that participate in shooting events and hunting. Thank you very much for your time. Have a great night.
Thank you. Public comment?
I'm from Delta County. I'm up here to support their Second Amendment movement. I'm here to represent the Delta County Gun Owners Association. Across the nation, sanctuary county and sanctuary state movement has grown. Right last, I checked around in November, last reported, there was approximately 350 counties across the nation that are sanctuary counties. There is three states that the entire state is a sanctuary. I know people don't believe it, but are, they are trying to attack our Second Amendment rights. There are people out there, and it's very evident with what just, what's happening in Virginia right now, people that don't understand gun laws or trying to pass gun laws that make no sense. There is not a gun law on books that has stopped the crime, not a sanctuary, or not a gun-free zone, not a magazine ban, not a felony charges that you can't own a gun, because criminals, by their own nature, don't follow the laws. And by, with the United States way it is, with the number of guns in the United States, there's over 150 million gun owners in the United States, there's over 400 million guns in the United States. And the best way for law-abiding innocent people is to have the right to keep and bear arms and protect themselves. And what's going on, even in the state of Michigan, with some of our legislators and our governor, they want to impose, one of the big things they're shooting for is the red flag laws. On the surface, that sounds really good. Guy doesn't have a mental capacity to own a gun, he shouldn't have one. I even agree with that. But the problem is, is they're doing it without due process. Somebody, all somebody has to say is, "That person has threatened me," or "That person, I don't feel is stable." And without due process, they can come and relieve him of his civil rights. And our Constitution specifically says that everybody has the right to face their accuser and afford a due process. There is not another right on the books that is chilled before you're, you're, you face a trial. So I would just like to be up here, like I said, they came down to support us, I came up to support them, and I hope you folks will adopt this resolution that they're offering to you and join the rest of the counties in the state of Michigan that will be adopting this soon.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Mark Estrilina, 206 Oak Street in Ischmane. And this, these issues with our Second Amendment are impacting our nation. I know that we have some laws that have been presented in Michigan that haven't made it to the top, that they're not right now going to change our laws. But it is enough that it's got our nation in an upheaval. There are many states, we've been seeing just Virginia, but there's Missouri, there's Colorado, New Jersey, Chicago, or Illinois has many issues. And what we have seen is that these gun bans or these gun restrictions have not changed the, the crime in these areas. But what we do have, as Michigan citizens and United States citizens, is we have the right to keep and bear arms, and that's what we're hoping to protect. And what we're looking for you, from you as our commissioners in our county, is to know that we have your support, to know that you're behind us, that we're not in this fight alone. None of us want to see a fight, none of us want to see the law come into our door to take our guns. And that has been a threat throughout the nation, and it's not something that's brand new, it's something that's been going on for years and years and years, but it's gotten to a point that people are getting very upset about it. And I know many of you are gun owners, and many of you support the Second Amendment, and we appreciate that. And we're looking for some peace of mind to know that you guys are behind us in this fight, that our state is behind us in this fight, that these are constitutional rights that were fought and died for, that were given to each of us, and we're looking to protect them for the generations to come, for our children and our grandchildren yet to come. We look at our state, just the money that comes into our state from hunting alone is billions of dollars each year, and further restrictions, more restrictions from what we already have is a great infringement upon our Second Amendment rights. And we're all standing up for that. We're standing to protect what our country has been through all of these years, and it was built on guns. It was built on the right to keep and bear arms. It was built by militias that rose up, and we need to be able to maintain that. And we're looking for security from our county to know that they're behind us in that. We're looking toward our sheriffs to know that they're not going to be coming, that there are laws being passed that are unconstitutional laws. We see it in many other states that are not constitutional, but yet being enforced. We want to know that our commissioners, that our sheriffs, that our prosecutors are behind us to not prosecute non-constitutional laws. And there are enough people in this state that there will be an uprising, that there will be fights, and we're hoping to, hopefully, before it gets to that point. And we're looking toward, to our commissioners in our counties and then move on to a state level from there. I thank you very much for the work that you've done. I know that you have prepared your side of the resolution, and I appreciate that greatly, that you are willing to reaffirm your constitutional, or your oath to uphold the Constitution, and that brings peace to my heart. There's plenty of other things going on that we are looking at. We're looking around to states around us and seeing the things that are happening, the infringements that are taking place, and we are hoping and praying that that does not happen in our state and especially in our own county and in our communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does that follow Mark? I guess, if you want to speak?
My name is Ryan Lipinski. I live at 508 Shaw渡渡河路Gwin. I just wanted to say I'm a disabled veteran, and the reason I'm disabled is because I fought for this country's freedoms, which include our constitutional rights, and that's why I shake here today. And if we allow our government to violate our-- And, um, if we allow our government to violate our second amendment rights, and what's the point of me obtaining the injuries that I have today, I'll never sit still again. And I'm going to shake for the rest of my life. Nothing can be done about it. And all of that is for nothing if we allow somebody to take away our rights. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Move on with your agenda, you'll have to find later to speak, want to.
I can speak after.
Okay. We'll move on here to claims and accounts. Motion to be ordered here for Mr. Alhoun to be abstained from voting on the Elder Delta Block Electoral Bill because she's a member of the board. So I appreciate the board agreeing that, right? Motion, so.
Support.
Chris Granini, supported by Commissioner DeRosa, that Mr. Alhoun can abstain on voting on the Elder Delta Block Light Bill because she's on the Elder Delta Block Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed. Biweekly pay for all the trade end of January eleventh, two thousand twenty, seven hundred eleven thousand, four hundred sixty-eight dollars, fifty-two cents. And approval of a check number one nine seven oh oh nine, dated one ten twenty, twenty-four, one fifty-eight ninety-eight, payable to Elder Delta Block. And I guess we have eight hundred sixty-five thousand, one hundred forty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents, also available.
Motion to pay this.
So what the motion is to pay everything but the Elder Delta Block?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Elder Delta Bill, one, uh, fifty-eight ninety-eight, motion to pay that.
So.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Republicarians, privileged comment, transitional items, action items, register of deeds, automation I'll read through the background from Carla. I hear register of deeds automation fund, uh, proposal here says in two thousand three, MCL six hundred point two five six eight was established, and regarding an automatic fund, it reads, uh, register of deeds shall deposit five dollars of the total fee collected for each recording in the automation fund advanced technology. And this money should be used to import all these miscellaneous images from the early eighteen hundreds to nineteen eighty-three and have those images microfilmed, okay? So now they've done that, and she's asking, uh, the current law requires, uh, land records to be automated, although requests for over ten, uh, thousand normal are placed on biz. I request that this be waived as we have done work with this vendor. So the recommendation is we have all documents digitized from eighteen hundreds to nineteen eighty-three, now it's time to have these imported into our software system. The cost for this project is ninety-seven thousand, three hundred ninety-eight dollars and thirty, uh, four cents, and we have substantial funds in the automation fund for it. Carla's here, if you have any questions.
I'd love to approve that recommendation, please.
Support.
I have one question. Carla, uh, looking at the documents, it appears that the FIDLAR, uh, system that would be in place is compatible with the system that's already placed, placed by that company.
Right.
And is that why you're suggesting we waive that?
Yes.
Do you need a motion for that?
No, I think it's part of it, isn't it?
Is it part of the process?
So, all the funds, this ninety-seven thousand dollars is coming out of the automation fund, which is five dollars if a recording goes into this fund, right? How much money's in that fund? You have any idea about that?
Right now?
Yeah, just curious. Okay, just curious. Thank you, so.
Any other questions, Carla? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Next, the, uh, then, uh, the resolution affirming support of second amendment rights, uh, basically to what it, to support or to support this, when we take the oath of office as commissioner, we swear to uphold the constitution of the state of Michigan and the United States of America and all amendments. And we've had a legal review of this, and this is basically what we're going to ask the board to reaffirm. So I'll, I'll read the resolution, it says, "At a regular meeting of the Marquette County Board of Commissioners on the twenty-first day of January two thousand twenty, the Marquette County Board of Commissioners resolved to support constituent rights as follows. Whereas we have been requested to adopt a proposed second amendment sanctuary, uh, county resolution, whereas civil council has opined that, uh, proposed resolution exceeds our authority to the extent it directs the activities of the sheriff or the prosecutor. Whereas when the assumed office, we all looked and took an oath of office, which we swore to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and fairly discharged the duties of this office. Whereas support of the Constitution of the United States includes all of its amendments, including the second amendment, uh, there too. Whereas the commission and all of its members wish to reaffirm their commitment and promise to support the same, now be therefore resolved to Marquette County Board Commissioners that the commission does support and will continue to support our pledge of support on the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, including all amendments therein. And will ask for a motion."
And make a motion to support the resolution as it's presented.
Thank you.
Supported by.
Commissioner DePietro.
Yeah, so we have a resolution, we have a roll call, please.
Okay, I have a question, please, may I? So, last time when we were here, we wanted civil council to tell us, what, I asked the question, what does it mean to be a sanctuary county? And I'm not sure this answers that. All this does is say that, hey, that their proposed resolution was overbrought, and this is, it works. Does that mean we're a sanctuary county if we pass this?
I had sent out a legal, um, this resolution was drafted by Commissioner Adam. So, this resolution doesn't create Marquette County as a quote-unquote sanctuary city.
Yeah, I don't, I, I got, I got your opinion, you've said this, but I, I just, I don't understand exactly what a sanctuary county is.
I'm not sure anybody in this room fully understands what a sanctuary county is.
So it's a, so it's a tag. I mean, I get that there's a term that's, that's out there, and we do that from time to time as a community, as we cope with terms, but.
We support the second amendment rights.
Absolutely.
And that's, I guess, what's important out of the whole thing, I guess.
Okay.
As far as being able to tell the prosecutor and sheriff how to do their job, I'm agreeing with that. May I speak on this?
No. Uh, no, I, I understand all that. I, I mean, the point was whether or not we're a sanctuary county, and that's, not, and not, not that there wasn't some technical issue with the, the other resolution when we were trying to tell other elected officials what to do, and I understand that included. And I certainly support the second amendment, but I'm just not sure whether that means for a sanctuary county. I guess it probably does, because now we are saying that we support the second amendment.
I, I don't read that from this proposed resolution, Commissioner. I, I, I'm, I'm seeing that we acknowledge receipt of the proposed language that we received at the last meeting, and that we thought it was overbrought and, uh, required us or asked us to, to make directions to other elected officials, which we don't have the authority to do. So, in essence, what this resolution is recognizing that we received that, uh, in my opinion, second amendment sanctuary county resolution, but that, uh, we have concerns with the language. However, we recognize that we do support the constitution, we swear oath to support the constitution of not only the U.S. of Michigan, and I will support this resolution.
All right. Thank you.
We have a motion on a support, roll call, please.
Commissioner DeRosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Adamini?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordin?
Yes.
Commissioner Alhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner DePietro?
Yes.
Chairperson Corbett?
Yes. Thank you for all your comments. Next, we have Sugar Oil Fountain Natural Area Reclamation, uh, through, I guess, the background, this Marquette County is currently a visiting, it can be in our trust grant to make enhancements to Sugar Oil, uh, natural area. And, uh, table, concrete pad for track, contracting, big table, bike rack, non-waste receptacle, and also a full edition of H, and impressive signs along the trail. And project is funded by MDNR Trust Fund Grant, and who owns the oil spend was, I guess, Overstar thirty-five thousand five hundred, and each still pre-service forty-two five hundred. Been approved by the state at thirty-five five hundred, I guess. Motion to consider awarding the contract to the board.
Come on.
Spark. Motion to forward it to Overstar for thirty-five five hundred. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Hey Jerry, can I have one minute?
What's that?
Can I have a minute? I forgot to introduce myself to people that didn't know. I'm John Carlson, county mine inspector, I live in eight oh six, third second street. I didn't want to leave, but I'll let the people know who I am. Thank you very much. A lot of sorts, but.
If that contract amendment, the way you are calling it, that's a little more complicated one.
Yes, um, this is the twenty eighteen AIP grant that we were awarded by the FAA. Uh, we have to, uh, the FAA has requested us to amend the contract, uh, to reflect the removal of one of the primary funding, primary funding, uh, projects in the grant. We, this grant was designed upon a runway broom and a apron repair due to some, um, confusion with the bidding process and the documentation the FAA requests or refuse to pay for the runway broom, and requesting us to pull that from the grant. Uh, the grant will need to be amended, uh, by removing six hundred and eleven thousand, uh, seven hundred and eight dollars out of the grant, uh, leaving the, the current twenty eighteen grant with a total of a hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars. This portion of the grant will cover apron repairs that were, uh, also part of the grant. So the, uh, staff's recommendation is, uh, Marquette County Board of Commissioners to approve the signature of the grant amendment, uh, and to include the resolution, uh, attached to the memo as well.
So the six hundred and eleven thousand and seven hundred and eight dollars be, be captured in the future for the project at the park?
Yes, this, the, the money that is removed from this project is not lost money. What it does is it falls back into the program, the airport, uh, airport improvement program, and which we are able to draw back out in future years. And we've currently, uh, started to plan where that funding, uh, that was originally taken out of this grant and added to the future grants will be utilized in future projects. So, at the end of the day, we do not lose any, uh, federal funding, uh, it is just reallocating it for a different project. Now, the broom project, uh, is a completed project, and that one is, has already been before through other mechanisms with passment facility charges.
So the last, yes, to approve the, the resolution, correct?
That is correct, yes.
So the resolution of opting, uh, and approving the execution of the contract agreement by the Marquette County Board of Commissioners of Marquette, Michigan, and Michigan Department of Transportation for the purpose of, uh, obtaining international airport, uh, under schedule, uh, project number three dash two two six dash one five three, is resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Marquette County, Michigan, uh, shall enter into a contract agreement for the development of Sawyer International Airport, and such contract agreement shall be set forth thereafter. The general pool court enforcement of the Marquette County Board of Commissioners hereby authorized and directed to execute the contract on behalf of the county of Marquette, Michigan, and in the talisman, Marquette County clerk, hereby authorized and directed, uh, to attest to executions, that the contract is even referred, therefore shall be attached.
Motion to approve, um, staff's recommendation.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner DeRosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Adamini?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordin?
Yes.
Commissioner Alhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner DePietro?
Yes.
Chairperson Crispin?
Yes, thank you, go ahead. Next, I will ask, uh, yes, to do was a building of six hundred, all of the airport that they have identified, some additional space that they were named, and they're going to lease this new location, it's three thousand, seventy-two feet, uh, for coal storage, and it's a twelve month lease effective February one, two thousand twenty, through January thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one, dollar fifty square foot annual revenue, five thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars. Lesser is responsible for all taxes, lessy is responsible for all other costs, and lessy is responsible for standard county liability insurance coverage amendment. So, recommendation from staff at the airport, we authorize the county board chair to sign this agreement.
Motion to approve the staff recommendation.
Moved by Commissioner DePietro.
Clerk.
Moved by Commissioner Alhoun. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, county recreational plan, uh, here. Resolution, that one, right?
We have a resolution, I guess, and we also have some staff if, if there's any here.
Yes, staff wants to come forward. One question I have, as I went through with phase four and five at Burpitt's Park, we approved document ninety-four of these five phases, and we've completed three of them, but one of the last two that haven't been, uh.
I think, I, I mean, I just joined the staff this summer, so that historical information can probably be provided by some of my colleagues.
Yeah, I don't know about four and five specifically. The most recent project at the park was, um, the sewer line renovation. Um, I didn't think.
Did we ever come up to the podium?
Yeah.
And identify yourself also.
Yep, I'm one of the, I'm a senior client with Marquette County. Um, I don't know specifically the phases. Um, I do know the most recent project at the park, which I do believe was part of the phasing, um, was sewer line, um, sanitary sewer repair, um, a new roof on the pavilion, um, additional ventilation on the pavilion, um, new flooring in the restrooms, and that was all done, um, last year in the three weeks.
You have some big cost items at the harbor refuge.
Yep.
Up in the middle twenties, but is that supposed to be grant funding, or how are we going to pay for that?
Yep, that, the big number you're probably seeing is the, um, harbor expansion of the dock system. We had previously applied for grant funding to fund that and did get it, so planning to reapply.
Three hundred thousand dollar number on it, so.
Yep, they don't.
Well, and the adoption, in, in previous recreation plans, the county has, uh, by the way, Evan Bonzel, I work for Marquette County here in the, uh, planning division and the administrative office, but, uh, previous recreation plans have not included a plan for the harbor, a recreation plan for the harbor, and what including a harbor recreation plan for Big Bay Harbor allows to do is be more successful, uh, in going for state and potentially federal funding for the harbor, as well as applying for different grants.
Yeah, we added a short, uh, harbor plan in this plan, so that opens us up, us up to waterways funding, so we can apply for additional grants.
I looked through it over last week in one with Stone, and among the recreation commission and the Gotti, so I'm interested in, you did a good job overall with the plan, it's well done.
Thank you.
And addresses the six major areas. Addresses the six major areas of the county that is apart as far as parks. Well done. So we have asked, I guess, support of a resolution to approve this.
I move to approve the resolution of the recreation plan.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Alhoun, supported by Commissioner Ivey. Any other comments? Roll call.
Commissioner Alhoun?
Yes.
Commissioner DePietro?
Yes.
Commissioner Derosha?
Yes.
Commissioner Adamini?
Yes.
Commissioner Nardine?
Yes.
Chairperson Corbin.
Thanks, very good work.
Thank you.
Next, jail annex boiler retrofit.
Aaron is here, I'm not sure if he made it out of the hall yet, because we had to stand in the hall and I still feel like you're easier.
Aaron, you want to talk about?
That's not him, yeah.
Commissioners? So I'm here today to present a project that I've been working on since two thousand nineteen, the summer of, jail annex boiler retrofit. The jail and the annex have a central boiler system, two steam boilers that heat both of those buildings. They are forty-eight years old now. In the last couple of years, we've been running into pressure vessel issues with the boilers, cracking and fracturing inside. When you start to see those things, it starts to lean into that, at their end of life. You know, so facilities had to react, get certified welds on these things, and then also bring in the state of Michigan Boiler Division for assessment. So this project will remove those steam boilers from our central boiler room. It'll put in three domestic, or three hot water boilers that will provide hot water heating systems to the county jail along with the annex boiler. I broke this project up into two phases. And the reason I did that in two phases is because the bids were coming in lower than what was budgeted. And there's some reasons for, the reasons why they were lower than budgeted. The engineer on the project, U.P. engineering and architects, found a good way to not have to go into our concrete chases within the county jail to redo the piping. So we found some other ways to go around that, so we didn't have to get into the, a lot of the physical building type of things. I mean, the county jail, that was a huge expense, because nothing's really easy at all to get at in that building. So that was the reason I put a phase two on here, is to, just to put that out there. Maybe the time is right to go within the second phase, and I can explain what that second phase is as I go through here. Yes?
One question, Aaron. Do we have ample power?
Power, electrical power?
We looked at, yes, for this upgrade?
Yep.
Okay, and that's, that's been validated by U.P. engineering?
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's significant, Aaron, that we budgeted eight hundred thousand dollars, and now even with the phase two, the whole thing totaled five hundred and sixty. So we're looking at saving two hundred and thirty thousand, thousand, two dollars under the budget. That's a wonderful thing.
Yeah, and I thought that also, but then I needed to justify why that is.
And you did.
And I did, and even before, the original budget on this job is, I didn't put this together with my numbers. I reached out for a feasibility assessment, just because it's such a large dollar amount, and I wanted to try to be as accurate as possible. Well, we found a better way of doing it in some, you know, cost savings associated with that.
And I certainly like that Dressler's is a local company, so.
When you see a big variance in those bids, it usually means something's going to come back to haunt us later on, so I hope we've done our due diligence on it.
That was number one, that you think of when you do these projects. What you need to do is you have to go in with a really good post-bid interview. You bring your consultant on board, you bring all the players from the lowest bidder. You brought, I brought them to my office face-to-face, and we went through all elements of the project to make sure that they had a check mark to everything that they put a number down on.
Well done.
We've had a lot of work done by Dressler Mechanical, and they're a very reliable and good company.
That's correct.
I would move that we implement phase one and phase two with the low bidder.
Support.
It's good work, we, something's needed badly.
It's badly.
Could you tell us what the timeframe of this is?
The timeframe is when we're going to be no heat situation, so it'll be about mid-June, starting in June, and then the systems all have to be back on by September fourth, or there's going to be liquidated damages assessed.
Any comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Thank you, good work.
Thanks.
Next, airport zoning, border of the field deployment, like Commissioner Alhoun mentioned, we have two applicants, we have a need for two people.
I would move that we appoint both applicants to the airport zoning board of the fields.
Support.
Other comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. State land bank housing development, vote in.
Thank you. Hopefully I had a chance to read the memo that I put together for you, but just a couple of points I wanted to draw out. The reason that we're bringing this to the county board, first and foremost, the state land bank legislation does allow land banks to borrow, to fund programs like this, so we definitely have the authority to do it. However, back in two thousand and nine, when we created the land bank, we specifically put in our bylaws that any borrowings would come before the county board of commissioners. And I think that that was done, I was here at that time, ten years ago. I think the reason that that was done, one, I don't know that we ever envisioned that we would grow to the point that we might contemplate doing a project like this, but two, we just really wanted the county board to have faith in what we were doing and be a part of understanding the direction that we're going in. And so we put that in the bylaws, kind of as an extra step, so that we were bringing that, those kinds of decisions back before this, this board. So that's, that's why it's on your agenda, and the land bank isn't just doing this on its own merit. A little bit of history, just about land banking in general, and how the focus is really changing, not only here in Marquette County, but around the whole state. Obviously, over the past ten years, you've heard a lot about demolition. We've done a lot of demolition. Land banks downstate have done a lot of demolition. There's been a lot of light elimination funding. That funding source has kind of dried up. Land banks are sitting on large inventories of vacant lots, and they're really now starting to look at, well, what next? How can we increase tax base? How can we use the tools that we've been given to focus on development? And so we're not alone in, in kind of shifting gears and looking at development. And that's kind of where we're at, too, is just, you know, we've got these vacant properties, what's next? How do we start to increase tax base after the light elimination and demolition that we've done? The state of Michigan is following that change of focus and have offered a couple of programs that kind of put us at a point where we're able to do this. The state land bank has created a housing development loan fund to try to assist land banks in developing these sites. And then MISTDA has started a new program called MISTDA Mod, which allows land banks to build modular constructed homes on properties that they own. So we're looking at utilizing both of those programs to make this work. You hear a lot about missing middle, particularly when they talk about the city of Marquette and this, this housing market that's missing from the picture. Also, QPAD's doing a housing study right now, and I participated in some of those meetings, and you hear a lot about the west end of Marquette County and the aging housing stock, and that there's really no new construction happening. Through this program, we're hoping to address both of those issues, and hoping to do work in all three cities for kind of different reasons in each of those cities. The guidelines in terms of income for this program are a little bit different than maybe what you're used to hearing about. Lauren Luce, who's here tonight with our planning department, has a housing program that she manages that you're all probably very familiar with. That program focuses on eighty percent area median income families that it supports. This MISTDA Mod program is focused at a hundred and twenty percent area median income. So it's really, they're not calling it affordable housing, they're calling it working class, working class housing. And that's really the need that they're trying to fit. So this program is a little bit different than maybe what you're used to hearing about from a program like Lauren's. The timing is good for us right now, because we have Evan Bonzel on our staff, who is very passionate about housing. And so Lauren and Evan and I have actually been working on this project together, so the timing works out pretty well, that we can tap into that resource with Evan. And I want to point out, too, just the way that this process would work with the state loan, MISTDA, through the MISTDA Mod program, will fund the initial home, and that's, that's considered a spec home. So it's a home that folks can walk through, they can see the quality of construction, they can, they can look at it. The land bank is then committing to building three of its own. Of those three, we would find a family, that family would be pre-approved for financing, then we would draw the funds from the state loan, build the house, sell to that family, and pay back the state loan. So it's really construction financing, if you will, and filling that gap to get the home built before we can sell it to the family.
Ann, I'd like to touch base on the construction phase. I think this is a great idea, great program. Do you, as the land bank authority, have the ability to select contractors and to build the modular homes? Because I'm sitting here with Brian, who's, who's in the business of teaching carpentry to individuals looking to go into construction trades. Could we partner with the union operator to build those modular units that now it becomes not only an education piece with state funding, it also assists in the development of local labor and?
Good question. So the MISTDA Mod program has a list of modular manufacturers. Obviously, that's kind of a specific, you know, there are only certain companies that do that work, but they have a list of modular manufacturers that are eligible to build the modular part of the home. But there are foundations that have to be put in, there's finishing work, there's other work that has to be done on that site to allow for that modular home to be put. We do have two, well, one local, U.P. modular manufacturer that we've reached out to, one in Wisconsin, and then there are a variety of them in the lower peninsula that are on the list to work. But I think, I think that there are opportunities, and if not through the MISTDA Mod program, there are definitely opportunities on other land bank projects that we work on. I mean, we've done work with high school students in, in allowing their advanced construction programs, so we, we're definitely open to that.
Worth holding that discussion.
Yes, absolutely. We'll connect.
We have a recommendation to allow the Marquette County Land Bank Authority to borrow funds from the state land bank through the attached term sheet with final loan documents subject to county civil council review. Motion considered?
Yeah, I have another question.
I'll move, if anyone has a question.
Support. Move by Commissioner Adamini, support by Commissioner Alhoun.
So, the land bank will borrow money from the land bank bank?
So, in Michigan, there's a state land bank.
Right.
And then counties can create land banks. So this would be our county land bank borrowing from the state land bank's housing loan program.
Right. Now, MISTDA then, would they be the purchaser, the ultimate purchaser of the home? They would get their mortgage loan through MISTDA?
No, no, not necessarily, no.
Okay, so they have to arrange a private loan?
Yes.
And, and nothing gets built unless and until a purchaser is identified?
With our funding, yes. MISTDA will fund that initial spec home.
Yeah, just the one?
Yep. With our three, I don't want to borrow that money until I know I can sell it. I mean, our real estate agent that we work with is quite confident we're going to be able to sell these homes, but we want to make sure that we have that lined up. So our hope is, once that spec home is built, we can show that to people. You know, we have a sales model, if you will, to show them. Then we have the sites picked out, we find somebody that's interested in having them in there.
So the first one is going to be the model to entice them?
Yes, yes.
And then, but you're not going to build one, two, and three?
Unless we had three families lined up, ready to go.
Unless you have a signed purchase agreement.
Correct.
With financing from a, a, a private lender. And, so you're guaranteed that at the end of this project, you've got somebody who's going to buy and pay for it, and it will be no expense to the company.
Correct. And I didn't talk about the tail end of the program at all, but if we are able to sell our three and MISTDA's spec home, they will actually fund a fifth home at the end of, of the end of the project. So that's kind of the incentive for us to, yes, yes.
And, and are we paying interest on, on this?
The loan term sheet had the five percent interest listed. My understanding is that doesn't start until, it's either when you draw, I don't even think it's when you draw the funds. I think you have twelve months to repay or upon sale of the home.
Okay, but that, we would be reimbursed for that expense?
Yes.
Uh, that interest expense in the purchase agreement that's signed by the ultimate purchaser?
Yes. There's certainly no money to be made by the land bank in doing this, but we want to be reimbursed for it, yes.
I just want to make sure we're not paying anything.
Yes.
Or, or ultimately, it's a zero cost to the company.
Right.
I have a motion, and a support. To borrow the funds from the state land bank, the attached term sheet for final loan documents through review by civil council. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Thank you. Public comment? Anything else?
Hi, Bob Foxbender, one forty-two Winter Canyon Trail. First of all, I'd like to advance everybody for reaffirming the oath they took. You had a question of what is exactly a sanctuary city? I think a sanctuary, Second Amendment sanctuary city, to me, is somewhere where I can lay my head down at night without the thought, not that the pot crossed, but without the worry of somebody kicking my door in the two o'clock in the morning and taking my stuff from me through a red flag law. I have a hundred and fifty signature, or names of people in the county that feel the same way about that as me. Everybody's going to have their own opinion on this, I'm sure, but this hundred and fifty people don't. I understand you can't speak for the sheriff or the prosecuting attorney, and I understand Ken had presented a resolution to use. John, sorry, sorry, nervous, not used to this. Was there, I'm not, I would ask that either use yea or nay on his proposal resolution. At least we know where you stand on his resolution as a group, singular. That's all I have for now.
We made our position clear about that. Public comment?
I'm surprised you only have a hundred and fifty names. You could put my name on there, too, it'd be a hundred and fifty more.
There's more with everybody else. This is what I have.
I have two out of the week. I'm John Covarelli, two four seven, County Route ML in Nagani. I presented you with the resolution two weeks ago, and I agree with my poor work that I have here, but we still would like a yea or a nay vote on the resolution that was proposed to you. We do appreciate what you have done. Don't take me wrong, we really do. We also have another hundred and thirty or so signatures from people around the county. And as far as the sanctuary county goes, it's saying, there was some talk last time we spoke, that, well, if there's a law passed, then, you know, we'll have to abide by that. But if that law is contrary to the Second Amendment, I don't see how that law can be upheld. And that's, that's the whole point of a sanctuary city per Second Amendment, per sanctuary county, excuse me, is that we have the faith in our elected officials that says that regardless of whatever law is passed on the books in Lansing, if it is contrary to- is passed on the books in Lansing, if it is contrary to the Second Amendment, our county is not going to impose that law on its citizens. And that's what we're looking for. That's our belief as to what a Second Amendment sanctuary county is. And I'd just like for the record too, I'm a disabled vet myself and I took an oath when I joined, the same oath that you all took. And my oath never goes away. And as this gentleman over here said earlier, if we took that oath and we fought for that oath and then people want to step on it, that's not what we're looking for. And like I said before, another reason that we're doing this is we want to know who's for it, who's against it. That way we know what to do when it comes time to cast a ballot. I believe that's what's really important to all of us too, is we know that our elected officials have our back. And I know a lot of you do and I appreciate everything that you've done. And I hope that you will go ahead and, one way or another, sign the resolution that was proposed to you and we will greatly accept the one that you also proposed. And if I could, I would like a copy of both of those. Thank you.
Public comment? Any public comment?
My name is Diane Weber from Blackstone. And I would like to, I'm just totally amazed that as people, we want to look at our health and we look at things ahead of time. We will get vaccinations for our children. We all go to the doctor and get tests to see if we have heart disease or diabetes or the flu is coming, of course, we've got to go get a shot because we're looking forward on things that aren't even there. And yet, the cancerous thing that is eating at our Second Amendment and our freedom and our rights is here. And I don't care whether, people say, there is no red flag, it's plague laws here. I'm going to give you two illustrations and I'm only going to take one minute here to do it. I could give you a big list. There was a young man, his wife wanted a divorce, but she wanted everything. He went to have lunch or dinner with friends of mine. I got word that she had called the police and told them that he had guns in his car and circling the block and he threatened to kill her. He had been there all day. I called him and said, don't leave, because every police officer, from the sheriff to the city to the state, was out looking for him. That was because of her accusation. I also have another person that I know personally. This young lady burst in his house, it was a relative, burst in his house and then started screaming that he was in, there was witnesses, okay? Started screaming that he had a gun and that he was going to pull it on her. She ran out screaming, called the police, they surrounded the house. He was arrested for days and they confiscated every gun for a very long time. He did not have a weapon, there was people there that gave testimony, but they wouldn't listen to it. I could give you others. Now, these are not red plague laws, but they are happening. Please, listen to it, let's take that vaccination headline.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. My name is Ryan Underwood. I reside on Duke's location, Comby Road 533, 460. I wasn't going to speak tonight unless needed, I guess with the turn of events. I want to thank you for your support for our county mine inspector. We cannot afford the cost savings that you might be looking at or was looking at. I thank Chad and Mike, Brother Joe for speaking on behalf of our local, I'm the president of 4974 out there at the Tilden Mine. I'm also a member of the Delta County Gun Owners Association. And I'm both sides, you know, we have a network of people out there that, we're sheepdog. We're going to stand, we're going to fight for what's right. But we're also a people resolution, common sense. And it comes to, you know, the mine inspector, I expect you folks to reach out to us, talk to us. We're the people. We don't talk mining, we are iron miners, what we do. We didn't tonight pledge allegiance to some red flag with a hammer and a freaking sickle. We pledge allegiance to the United States of America, Second Amendment. And I know you people stand for that. And that's what these folks are talking about. We the people, standing up for what's right. I tell people this all the time, God put me on this earth to work, there's nothing wrong with that. That's what I do. We need our safety inspectors, not only for what we do as miners on a daily basis, but the future of our mining. I don't have to get into telling you the stories that I have here of the fatalities and the things that can happen. I accept what I do for a living. I broke my back out in the crusher that Yogi talked about. I accept that, it's what I do. We cannot afford to have a fatality or an incident where we lose somebody in a mine that should have been inspected, a fence that should have been up that wasn't recorded. These radicals that are out there, the same ones that want to have us salute to red flag, are the same ones that want to take my job away from me and the future of our job, what we do. What we've been doing for almost two hundred years, mining. When I was down in Lansing and I talked to them about the future of mining, I asked them when they got to the bridge and they got across, did they see the disaster and the environmental damage that we do? They don't see it because we don't do it. But we're not going to stand by and not do our due diligence to make sure that what we have done in the past isn't protected. And we don't make that mistake, we do what's right. And I know you folks want to do what's right. That's all I have to say, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody. Moving on here, we have a closed session. Chair, 14A is MCL 15.268 to conference with counsel in regard to litigation developments and determine strategy in that state of Tucker versus Roback at all matters pending in federal district court for the Western District of Michigan case. Number 2.19 CY 78.8 and 8. 14B is MCL 15.268 to conference your counsel to review litigation development and determine strategy in the Empire Iron Mine partnership. They claim the website and property matter pending in the Michigan tax tribunal. 14C is MCL 15.268, seek for purpose and strategy discussion attached to the litigation collective bargaining agreement, third request of management agreement. So motion to be in order for consideration.
So I'll move we go into closed session for the three enumerated purchases.
Support.
Your call, please.
Commissioner Ademini?
Yes.
Commissioner Nardine?
Aye.
Commissioner Alho? Commissioner DePietro?
Yes.
Commissioner DeRosa?
Yes.
Chairperson Corkin?
Follow five-minute recess, so anybody?